And good evening to our members of the public, Dr. Cascone, my fellow board members. And Ms. Flowers, would you please do us the honors of roll call? Okay, thank you. Good evening. Roll call. Mrs. Rutter? Mrs. Merklinger?
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein?
Here.
Vice President Tunnycliff?
Here.
President Trick Scales?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Mrs. Flowers. I know it's unusual that we are sitting here on a Friday evening. And I just wanted to give a short explanation to the public so that you understand. We are having our meeting on Monday evening, May 3rd, which is our public hearing on the board budget for the 2021, excuse me, 2122 school year. The board had some questions, some unfinished business, and we wanted to be able to gather one more time as a board before the meeting on the 3rd. And when the decision was made to meet, we realized that we had a number of days that had to post for media to announce that we were having the meeting this evening. And so that's why we ended up on a Friday. And we do understand that it is the Jewish Sabbath, and we recognize that and appreciate that. And we just want everyone to understand that we will avoid this at all costs in the future. We're not thrilled that we're here on a Friday evening, but we have work to do tonight. And we will, as I said, at this point in time, we have petitions in hearings from members of the public. But please know that on Monday evening, we will have our regular agenda, which calls for public comment on agenda items and then public comment on agenda items, non-agenda items, at the end of the meeting on Monday. But at this time, we will entertain petitions and hearings of citizens. And Ms. Graffteza will give you details on how to do it and what to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, at this time, we, although my screen says question from the public on agenda items only, I apologize, it should say petitions and hearings from citizens. I used the wrong slide for this meeting. You will be using the raise your hand button located at the bottom of your screen. And we don't have any phone callers, so that's great. And I'm going to ask your name and address for the record when you are called on. And you do not have to wait for anyone to stop talking. In order to push that button, you will be put right into a queue. So first, we have Julie Bookbinder. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Thank you. Julie Bookbinder, 37 Collmore. I'd like to start out expressing my sincere thanks to Dr. Cascone and the board for the developments that came out today, that K-5 not only will have the half days, Monday to Thursday, but will have synchronous instruction on Friday. I can't express how glad I am, my family is, my children are excited to go in for four days and to have actual class on Friday. I have neighbors whose children haven't been in school since last year because the hybrid was just, you know, too much or not beneficial enough to go in the two half days. And that's a tremendous development for which truly we are grateful. And yet, we really can't stop making forward progress on this. I sometimes get the disheartening feeling that we are at the end, the tail minutes of a sports game, and we're running out the clock. And that's not a good feeling to have with respect to my children. We really should be planning a way to get to full days at some point this school year. I completely appreciate that there's no way to really tell what the fall is going to look like and what procedures will be necessary, as outlined in the letter today. But we know what the procedure should be now. And I imagine there's an expectation that the fall is likely not going to be more strict than now. So we should be trying out a plan for children to be in school full days this school year so we can at least get that hammered out and not have a delay to full days in the fall. So again, truly, I'm so excited for next week. My children are excited for next week. I appreciate all of the hard work that has gone into this. But I really hope that no one is resting on laurels and that we continue to push to get to full days this year. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And, excuse me, next, we have Lauren Weinshank. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Lauren Weinshank, 6 Curry Lane, West Orange, New Jersey. I'd like to start out by echoing Julie's sentiments. I was very happy to see the synchronous instruction for Friday morning. I'm thrilled that my daughter will be in four half days next week. And I've worked with principals in Edison to get what I need for my son. And I'm very happy that they've been so responsive. I do have a question, as the communication was vague regarding combining of the cohorts in middle school and high school. I'm a little confused why we don't have that information now. As the opt-in was due, we should know how many children opted in. And by now, we should have the information about how many children can fit in a room in both middle school and high school levels. I would have been hopeful that we would have pivoted within the two-week timeframe from when we went to moderate, not to compare us to other districts. But as you can imagine, lots of information went out today from surrounding districts that cohorts were being combined completely or completely getting rid of in neighboring towns with some going to full day. So I'm confused about why it's taking three weeks of a moderate Kelly score to enact this instead of two, where we should have the information. And again, while I'm very happy we're going to synchronous on Fridays, I'm still confused why the elementary school students can't be physically in school Friday mornings. In regard to next year, there's absolutely, in my mind, unequivocally no reason we should not be planning for full days, five days a week. A family member is a pediatrician, and I received information today that on May 5th, hopefully, information regarding vaccination for 12 to 15 will be, you know, discussed. So again, we're also getting to that level. By September, teachers, staff members, and hopefully, children 12 and up who want to be vaccinated will have the opportunity to be vaccinated. And we cannot plan for those who choose not to be vaccinated. That cannot impact us. So those are my questions, and thank you again. Thank you for having this meeting on a Friday night.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Anne Marie Torrey. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good evening. Anne Marie Torrey, teacher at Hazel Avenue School. I would like to read a letter to you that was composed by the Basic Skills Staff of the district. Dear Dr. Cascone and members of the Board of Education, we are writing on behalf of Terry Granato, current supervisor of the Basic Skills Program. We understand that her current position in the district is being eliminated. As we are aware that many of the Board of Education members and current administration are fairly new to the district, we would like to enlighten you on the many contributions that Ms. Granato has brought the district throughout her 38 years of service. Ms. Granato has consistently and tirelessly committed herself in supporting all students of West Orange. Her insight and ongoing research on pedagogy and methodologies to help bridge learning gaps is the forefront of her leadership. Due to her vast knowledge, Terry has implemented various innovative programs for the district. Some of these programs include Level Literacy Intervention, code.org, iReady, the preschool program, parent information program, summer programs, and homework clubs. To note, West Orange implementation of the Level Literacy Intervention Program has been recognized by many districts. Educators from Canada and several New Jersey school districts have observed this program in action, as it has been deemed as an exemplar model of intervention. While introducing these new programs to the district, Ms. Granato ensured the proper usage and fidelity as all necessary materials and resources were purchased. In addition, all staff were trained and ongoing training was provided. Of utmost importance was the insurance that assessments were rich and detailed data showing individual strengths and weaknesses in all domains of ELA and math as to inform and drive instruction and critical next steps. In order to afford this district with the necessary staffing programs and resources, one cannot omit the fact that one of Ms. Granato's various important responsibilities were to acquire many grants. Due to her grant writing expertise, millions of dollars have been brought into this district. Without these monies, these programs and others would be non-existent for the children of West Orange. Ms. Granata has graced this district with her integrity, initiatives, innovation, professionalism, leadership, and devotion to the children of West Orange. She is the bedrock of this program. Her commitment and knowledge of this community cannot be measured or equaled. In the winter of 2019, the district had established proceedings to reevaluate the Basic Skills Program. Administrators and teachers sat together to begin this evaluation. However, due to the COVID pandemic, these proceedings came to a halt. As assessments and evaluations of this program have not been completed, does it make sense to make changes at this time? We implore you to reconsider making any changes at this time. We know that many of the students due to the pandemic may have many gaps that need to be filled. More students will be considered at risk due to various elements and the effects of this pandemic. Wouldn't now be considered a more crucial time to have the leadership and experience of Ms. Granato to help us navigate the services to close these gaps? With a program that has been successfully implemented, is this the appropriate time for more change? Maybe it's time to just try to get back to some kind of normalcy to assess the learning loss and to move forward with needed adjustments. We thank you for your attention and consideration in this matter.
Hey, thank you. And next, we have Kathy Deltufo. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please, and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kathy Deltufo, Washington School. Good evening, board members and Superintendent Cascone. This is a very, this is very difficult to present without sadness and fear, but I will do my best. It has recently come to my attention that the supervisor of Basic Skills, Ms. Terry Granato, is at risk of having her position eliminated and redesigned to fit an entirely new candidate per the recent job posting distributed by the district. Ms. Granato has provided unparalleled service to the district for 38 years. She has touched the lives of generations of families and knows the faces of community members personally. She has tirelessly worked for the betterment of all every day since the first moment she walked through the doors of the West Orange Public Schools. The highlights of her career could fill pages. She is respected and adored by the West Orange community of educators and taxpayers. Terry is the very definition of selfless. She gives of herself and treats everyone like family. All are important to her. Even through this difficult time of COVID, she smiles and spreads her love through finding the best in every situation and problem solving to make certain that everyone's needs are met fairly. Pitching a tent on her hands and knees and roasting marshmallows at an indoor campout with the neediest of children, read alouds with her silly voices and costumes, surprise resources to teachers in order to support all learners in a mailbox with a note of encouragement, jumping rope during a scorching hot June playdate. These are just a few examples of her beautiful heart and soul. Terry is strong. When others have crumbled in the face of adversity, Terry thrived. She's marched on and succeeded. Nothing holds her back from achieving her goals, both personal and for those of West Orange. Her innovative ideas and research has been the envy of other districts and countries. She was selected to act as an ambassador of literacy while uniting the West Orange Public Schools and the country of Canada. The personnel was so impressed with the achievements of our wonderful district and the work that Terry had single-handedly constructed and implemented, including but not limited to code.org, homework clubs, early start literacy and math programs, community coursework, English courses, Read 180, preschool programs, author and literacy nights, balanced literacy, district-wide trainings, school-wide book rooms, test prep coursework, and much more. When asked to fill a void, she jumps in without hesitation and does so with a smile. She stands up to meet and face a challenge for every colleague and for every child in this district. She is the first to raise her hand when asked to volunteer. She is responsive to her administrators and her teachers, trusted and admired by all. I respectfully and kindly ask if you would reevaluate any plans that would remove Ms. Terry Granato from this very important role in our district. If change to the program is what you seek, communicate it with Terry, and I can assure you, she will make it happen. She is a qualified and supportive team player who wants the best for all, especially the children of West Orange. In closing, I have met in Terry, a hardworking, dedicated individual. She brings in millions of dollars to work grant, excuse me, her grant writing and has established relationships with both individuals at the federal and state levels to access even more. I just don't understand why you would remove an employee like she from our position who brings so much to the children of West Orange. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hey, thank you. Next, we have Jay Figenbaum. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Jay Figenbaum. I live at 19 Biauski Road. I'd really like to address the Board of Education because I had already given Dr. Cascone the courtesy of coming to him first. Really, I had to question so many decisions that were puzzling as an educator that I just couldn't figure out. And honestly, Ms. Trick Scales, as an educator, I'm a little shocked that you went along with them. This, to me, shutting your doors in March, we all understood. Not having your teachers show their faces again until September, that was certainly not the standard. Dr. Cascone's answer to me was, well, not every teacher was so comfortable with the technology. I find it a hard sell in this community that nothing is better than something, that no live education, no real education, other than loading worksheets into Google. Then we repeatedly, as parents, have been told things with virtually no notice. Over and over, the communication is late. In November, when you chose not to reopen, again, that I understood. What I didn't understood is, at that same meeting, how could you not have your winter schedule ready? How was there no contingency planning? How did nobody see that that could happen? And then we waited weeks until an updated schedule came out. This certainly cannot be the best that we should expect. Then we move forward, and while the synchronous is great for some, what about the kids who can't sit in front of a screen? You've just put them back in front of a screen all those hours more. When I asked Dr. Cascone for an educational or scientific reason, he could not open those doors on Friday. Boy, did he lead me to believe it would be a different decision on that call. I feel also that when a superintendent says you will have an answer and then does not reply, and then you, a second time, he says, okay, well, now 48 hours later, then that deadline is not met. At some point, there's a lack of accountability. There's a lack of creativity. And I feel like many of, especially our special education children, have suffered greatly. I also see no plan to make up these gaps and move things forward without opening every minute you can. I know we can do better than this, but I think that we need to start doing better. And our neighbors, I implore you to force the administration to do better than this because we deserve it.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, did I cut out?
No, no, I wasn't sure if you were finished or not.
I believe I am, you know, that was really my message was just that these decisions are, were not backed up by education. A lot of them were by common sense. And that the answers I've received as a parent were very disappointing. And to be honestly misled by a chief school administrator, basically, was beyond disappointing.
Okay, thank you. Hey, next, we have Laura Nessner. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
You said it right. Thank you. I was waiting for it.
No, I'm confident now.
From Laura Nessner, 504 Eagle Rock Avenue. So a couple of things. I read through the latest communication. First of all, my daughter is super excited to go to school for half-days a week. She cannot wait. She has loved her two days, and we were still having meltdowns on her virtual days at eight years old. And so hopefully, this will help her a little bit. Still confused as to if we can change the schedule to make Friday synchronous learning. What are the obstacles now with getting those students that opted into in-person in-person on Fridays? Because scheduling was the big issue, but now apparently it's not an issue. So I'd like to know those obstacles. Also, I'm hearing a lot of concern from fifth-grade parents. I do not have a fifth grader, but this concerns me for the future, if this is how things are going to be handled. That kids who were straight-A students until this year, so they struggled with virtual learning clearly, are being denied access into the sixth-grade honors program and not even being permitted to take the math test, I believe. That's what I'm hearing, and that is super concerning because that's unacceptable. So now you're saying if somebody gets a bad teacher one year, their fifth-grade year, and they struggle because of that, then they can't get into honors. And this year, it's virtual learning, which is the obstacle, clearly. And also, let's see, there was something else, but maybe that was it. So yeah, Fridays, I don't understand. Oh, also, this was the other thing I needed clarification on, was the letter said that we will now have synchronous afternoon learning. I'm not sure if that was, if that's a true statement or if that was, I know previous communications have said things like that, and they were in error. So I would like clarification on that. Thank you.
Yeah. Next, we have Stacy Millett. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, yes, this is Stacy Millett from 1 Barbara Avenue. Thanks, Dr. Cascone and the board, for reopening up elementary for the four half-days and now having the live portion of the Friday mornings. I'd also be curious in understanding what the barriers are to having that portion in person. I did have one further question regarding planning for the next school year. And that is, is the curriculum planning going to be following the Google Classroom model again? Or since we're approaching the school year with the mindset that our students will be there in person, are we going to be pivoting back to traditional classroom learning and just utilizing Zoom and screens and everything else as more of a backup when it's needed? That is all. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Claudia, and I don't want to butcher your last name. So if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
It's Claudia Lucretto for Greenwood Avenue. And I'm just calling regarding the communication that we just received recently. You know, one, I'm very excited that elementary school is going back for half-days next week. The Friday synchronous, I'm not sure, you know, why can't we add that to going in-person? Like, why do we have to go back to the screens? My, I'll be honest, my fourth grader loves being in school, and he gets so much more of being there in person versus being online. Online, he's distracted. He doesn't want to do it. And that's along with a lot of other kids. And then for the middle school portion, I have a sixth grader. Why do we have to wait until May 17th in order to combine cohorts? Why can't we do it earlier than that, especially if we're waiting for that two-week period? Why do we have to go basically a month before we combine them? And that's really, I mean, that's really about it. I'm really, I know that you all know I'm very vocal. I want my kids back in school. I think they need to be back in school. Being online, I think we're doing a disservice to them. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. At this time, this is the last call for those who would like to speak. Again, if you've joined us recently, the slide says a public agenda items only, but that is not true. It's petitions and hearings from citizens. So it's the raise your hand button located at the bottom of your screen. And this will be the last call for that. Heather Hamilton, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, Heather Hamilton, 24 Clonover Road. I am, thank you for having this open meeting. And I just wanted to express my concern about the modification to the HAP ELA program for the sixth grade at Edison. This program has been of an immense benefit for my son and the countless students in his class that have loved it and have benefited from it. And I really, and while I can understand the reasons for wanting to expand the program, I really think that the merging of ELA with the HAP has offered like a merging of ideas that has been very helpful for the transition into the higher learning grades. And I hope that this will be considered in the program development. And if it could be expanded, offering a HAP math that would replace honors math instead of removing the HAP ELA, just expanding the program so that the other HAP students in West Orange have access to the great teaching and HAP-specific teaching that the program offers. Once again, I really love the program, and my son is just so happy and has learned so much and has thrived. And I really would hope you'll consider adjusting it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And at this time, we have no other people raising their hand. Yep, no others are raising their hand.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Graffteza, and thank you, members of the public, for joining us this evening. Let's start with Dr. Cascone, and then I'll circle back around on one of the questions directed to the board.
Thank you, President Trick Scales. Can you hear me, everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so great. So just, you know, we had a small enough number of speakers where I felt like I can, you know, speak to each one individually. So first off, thank you to, you know, just to the parents, Ms. Bookbinder, Ms. Weinshank, just recognition of some of the progress and the forward movement. You know, I'd like to assert that, you know, that we're not, we're not really running out the game clock in that, you know, May 3rd, Monday, you know, represents for us, you know, in our district in terms of our trajectory and our chronology, you know, fairly significant forward momentum. And I always like to kind of put it in the context of what our path was this year. In terms of when we were actually able to, to make it happen and get in, which was mid-January. Our high school actually didn't start until, till May first. And obviously now that we have within the guidelines, we've made a, you know, a relatively quick pivot into. You know, into compressing the middle school cohorts now that we're, we're in receipt of that information. And I will address the May seventeenth question in a moment. I think I'd like to share with the folks on the call that I did attend the Essex County Superintendent Roundtable. Meeting this morning. And amongst other things, obviously, school reopening was a, was a big part of the agenda. And, you know, I did actually canvas the group because I was curious. Because in a meeting that I attended last week, you know, there was some, you know, some data, some information presented as to, you know, the current. Or prospective modes of operation of the Essex County School Districts. And it didn't, it didn't look right to me. So I wanted to kind of calibrate on that by asking the superintendents directly. And specifically asked the question about and specifically per elementary school. Which school districts were, were either in full day presently or had plans to do so. For the remainder of the year. To the best of my knowledge, there's one, maybe two in, in the, in the county now that are full time. I know that Livingston has announced that they'll be going May tenth, Glen Ridge is considering May twenty fourth. But above and beyond those school districts, including Verona, Cedar Grove, Milburn, just to name a few off the top of my head. Have, have no intention of going to full day on the elementary level. And what is the stumbling block for them is really just how to figure out lunch. And how to figure out not so much on nice days, but on inclement weather days, how to really accommodate that. So I just, I thought that was worth noting. Because that is, does not appear to be, you know, what, what's going to be the standard practice for the remainder of the school year. In most districts that I canvassed in that meeting. It is true and, and I, and I asked this question as well because I was listening to the number of the superintendents talk about how they're going to one cohort on the high school level. And I just said to them, like, how, how are you doing that? I said, you know, we, we are barely going to be able to get two cohorts in at three feet. How are you doing it? How are you doing one cohort, you know, at three feet or even, even less than that? And it really just comes down to a matter of, A, the, the size of the school. Obviously, schools like, high schools like Glen Ridge and Cedar Grove and James Caldwell, they're significantly smaller than, than our high school. And they have perhaps less students who have signed on for hybrid learning. Believe me, it's, it's very frustrating to me. I asked it sort of incredulously, like, how are you doing that? Because I know now that we've been working on our compression of our courts, the high school and the middle school level. For example, the middle schools at three feet, they can do it. But they're like, there are going to be certain classrooms, particularly in the world language and the related arts classrooms that are larger classes. That they're going to have to figure out other way, what to do with the overflow of kids. So, and that's even just compressing two courts, cohorts, not even going to one. So I remain, you know, sort of surprised, but it can only have to do with local factors in their district that, that allow them to do that. You know, to the, you know, to, to the question about, about. Friday mornings, you know, being synchronous as opposed to onsite. So there have been a couple of times where I have gone back to the planning table with, with our principals. With our curricular supervisors, fully resolved, fully resolved that we're doing this. By golly, we're doing this. And this time around, whereas before I only asked sort of general information. This time I said, look, I said, if I'm going to go back to the community and to the board and indicate that we're not going to onsite Fridays. I need, I need detail. I need specifics. I need to understand exactly what the difference is and impact between an onsite day. And, and a synchronous day. And they, they did that by, by every area and just, and just a couple of. A, a couple of things that popped out and I have, I'm looking at a table now, which they put together for, for all areas and what the impacts would be. Basic skills, our kindergarten intervention program, which we started, small group instruction, gifted and talented enrichment ESL. Word language, physical education, instrumental lessons, Fanta's and Pinella assessments, I N R S meetings, special education programs, related services. Transportation and other teacher and staff considerations. This was the table was broken down into those groups. And it listed basically, you know, what the impacts would be. And so just kind of a couple that, that I think jump out to me is that, for example, it would increase. The class size in our, in some of our related arts, our related arts sections to forty students. As, as one example, because of course our, many of our related arts teachers are shared between schools. What it would also do is it would remove the teachers who are presently supporting. Particularly in our, in our primary grades would be pulled out because they would be delivering instruction in the afternoon. We do have some space issues as well. As you know, while we were able to remediate many of our HVAC concerns, there are some that remain. We do have classrooms presently, which have been taken offline because they do not have the adequate ventilation. Which of course will be remediating between now and next year. But when we're talking about pulling students out of the mainstream classroom into separate pullout sects, pullout rooms. There, there, there are, there are space issues that, that are, are not, that are not addressable. We would, for example, just going to kind of go through some of the other things here. A Friday enrichment for, for grades three through five would be canceled. In K two would be scheduled to new date and, and anytime we move any of these things. And, and I know it's like, well, it's, it's a scheduling thing. Well, yeah, I mean, it, it is. But the, these are conflicts that, that are not really, we, we can't really fix within the existing schedule. And so really, I mean, what it came down to was, and I can tell you that, and I know it's kind of. And the idea is, well, it's Dr. Kascone's decision. He makes the decision and you're right, I do. But I, I never make a decision unilaterally and I always make my decisions based on the information, the feedback that I'm getting for the people. Who are ultimately responsible for implementing it. And I could tell that, and they said, like, if you tell us to do this, we'll do it. But there was not a level of comfort or confidence that this was the right decision to make because of all the conflicts that it would cause. So ultimately, I, I did make that decision that I felt that it was, it was overly disruptive overall to the other things that we have going on. And, you know, that was the decision I made. It is a decision ultimately, that based upon the feedback I've received from principals and supervisors. I, I do think is overall holistically, the best decision for the district. And I understand that, you know, we will of course agree to disagree on that. You know, I, I can tell you that if you're interested in getting more information about that, Mr. Mendez really oversaw that initiative and working with the principals and supervisors. I'm happy to go into more detail about it. Let's just see if we can go here. So I think it's important to understand that presently our intervention would be reduced from three times to two times a week. Because presently what happens is if you're a basic skills teacher and you have. Let's say sixty students in your caseload. Presently, they meet with their students three times a week. They meet with their students on Monday, Wednesday and Friday. If you pull that meeting timeout on Friday, then that intervention with those students is reduced to two times. So that's just one of many, many, and there's no, there's no way to, to, to ameliorate that. It, it just, it goes from three to two. There's no other way, there's no other place to put it. We'd be pulling kids out of their afternoon classes. And so students who typically would be able to go to their art and their music and their world language classes would be getting pulled out of that for basic skills or therapies. So it, it really is extraordinarily disruptive to a lot of students and a lot of schedules. And so ultimately we felt, we, we heard the feedback that we received from parents about Fridays. And with Mr. Feigenbaum's feedback, withstanding. That it would address, you know, some of the concerns relative to getting that more direct instruction on, on Fridays. Planning for September, you know, it's an interesting question. So. And yet at the same time, it's, it's sort of a, it's as complex a question is, is actually really, it's, it's actually a simple question. Because if, if, if what we do. Is basically full days of school, all students in, with no option for students to do anything other than that. Well, then, then we, we're operating the way we typically do, right? We're, you know, we're not, we don't have occupancy limits on the bus, right? So I mean, we would, we would have to, to, to put our buses at full capacity. We, we could not have occupancy limits in the classroom, right? So, so those two things would have to, would have to be, would have to hold, right? And, you know, and so, but in, in a lot of ways, it would look exactly like it always has. You know, so what are we planning? I can tell you one thing that we are actively planning on now for September. Understanding that we're going to need really as many, if not all of our existing spaces up and running. Is we are working through now, understanding what those needs are. Working with our architects to work on those drawings, going out for bid for the HVAC work and planning that out. Doing building walkthroughs with principals, because that is something concrete we know we need to work on and that we're going to need to work on for September. But at the end of the day, like, we haven't received any, I, I would argue it's, it's sort of unfair. To, 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 to ask me that question when we have received no guidance. From the, 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 the National Department of Health, the, you know, the Federal Department of Health, the State Department of Health. The New Jersey Department of Education, no one has told us if, we have to assume that will, it'll be permissible to put forty eight kids on a bus. Right? I mean, if what the governor is saying that we're in all day, every day, all kids, then we need to be able to put forty eight kids on a bus. Presently, nobody's putting forty eight kids on a bus, no district, no public school district, I should say. If we're going to be in all day, every day, all kids. Then we know that our classroom is going to have twenty five, twenty six kids in the classroom. Presently, we're not authorized to do that. So, you know, we have to assume that therefore if that is the directive, then we'll be allowed to do that. So there are a lot of question marks there. That we just don't have answers to. And in reality, if we are in all day, all kids, then the planning endeavor is actually quite a bit simpler than it's been this year. Which is we do typically what we've done and then follow the guidelines as to, are they going to require students to wear masks? Are they going to require thermal screenings of students before they come in? These are all questions that we don't have the answers to. So I would suggest that while we begin preliminary thinking and planning about what that would mean in the absence of specific guidelines. And I'm going to tell you, I'm not on an island on this, on the, in this mindset. Also a topic that we discussed the superintendent's round table and we're all of like minds on that premise. All superintendents are really focused presently on closing this year out successfully. And looking for future guidance in the next several weeks. You know, I, I do, you know, I, you know, one of the things. That I think has always characterized me, you know, when I was a teacher, as a principal and now as, as an administrator is I. I acknowledge when, you know, when I've, when I've fallen short. And so, you know, in, in, you know, reference to Mr. Feigenbaum's comments. You know, I, I understand that, you know, that I have, I have not been as responsive as I needed to be this week. I can tell you that, you know, I apologize if you felt misled when we spoke. My resolve at that point in time is that this was the direction we were moving. And ultimately, when informed by detailed feedback from my team, I ultimately made the decision. I, I would like however though, to kind of just. To maybe present a slightly different. You know, kind of narrative relative to, to our process. You know, and, and Mr. Feigenbaum and I spoke about, you know, last spring. And while I would, I would suggest that it, it probably went beyond simply worksheets. I, I believe that's, that's slightly hyperbolic, although it might have been some people's experiences. But my understanding is that it, it went beyond that. But certainly you're right in that, in that we did not have any kind of consistent, in some case, no live instruction. And, you know, and I acknowledge that, you know, we, you know, perhaps we could have done, but done better last year. I think the issue was, and you know, and I'll just want to clarify that a little bit about the teacher capacity, is that. You know, the, the educational system was, was not, was not prepared. To take a staff, in our case of eight hundred teachers, you know, many of which. Were really only accustomed to teaching a brick and mortar. And I think you, you saw that more on the elementary level. Think typically our secondary teachers were a little bit more, in, in, per capita, more adept at using technology and that pivot was easier for them. But certainly on the elementary level, you had a really wide gap and continuum of, of technological capacity and literacy to be able to deliver that type of instruction. Clearly, you know, we did not have the capacity, although we did make some efforts to do that, to equip people with those skills. At the same time, within a couple of weeks of building out a, a virtual platform and putting of all, all our curriculum and our curricular resources online. Getting devices out, working with students in order that they were even able to do that in some cases, and parents for that matter. You know, but the, you know, the, I think that the, 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 the thought was that. That this would lead to disparities in student experience by virtue of whether you had a teacher who had. The technological proficiency to facilitate an online experience and the one that didn't. I mean, at, at the end of the day, certainly, I think, looking back on it, hindsight, we could have done better. And we could have offered more live instruction, acknowledged. I think that, you know, relative to the November postponement, I mean, we did have a plan when we postponed in November. If we hadn't postponed in November, we would have implemented the plan that we had designed since July. My recollection is that in December, prior to the holiday break. I communicate with the community relative to a perspective timeline for our implementation following the new year. And we, we ultimately held to that timeline. We implemented it exactly on the time that we said we would. And we implemented the plan that we had, we had developed and which we had approved by the board and the New Jersey Department of Education, the County Office of Education. That started in, in January fifteenth. And, and here we are moving forward with, with, with these enhancements. You know, I, I think that in terms of, you know, as far as like, what, what is our plan? And I will tell you that, that there has been a lot of work going on in the last number of weeks. Identifying, really looking at where students are, developing individualized plans to assist them. And of course, we know we have our E S Y program coming up this summer. Where we, obviously, we intend and the objective there is to close as much of the gaps as we can. Because that will be an on, you know, an onsite in-person program. We've spoken to, you know, the idea that we, we, we fully hold ourselves accountable for understanding. If there are gaps or there are regressions to, to, to do what's necessary moving forward. And, and also to develop individualized supports for students in the interim, for those students who really need it. We haven't been averse to that over the course of the time since we've been open to identify students who might need more than the model affords right now. And providing individualized approaches for those students. You know, so, you know, Mr. Feigenbaum, yeah, I hear you. Your, your, your feedback has been received. And I can assure you that I will be driven, you know, to, to restore that confidence and to restore that faith. And that's all I can do now is act on that and demonstrate that. Relative to the, you know, the question about fifth grade, fifth grade honors. You know, I, I, I'm, I'm. I'm gonna, I'm gonna table that question. I mean, I, I can speak generally to the honors process. I, I do think that I would, I would rather have maybe Mr. Mendez speak to that. You know, at the, at the next meeting, you know, in public session. You know, my, 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 my view of the numbers that came in, in terms of the students that qualified for honors. Is that, you know, our numbers were not disproportionately different. From the way the numbers look typically in previous years, though we did to some extent. Change the, the criteria as was explained at a, a, a public meeting relative to honors and gifted and talented. The, we recognized that moving to a new report card. And as such, you know, kind of the reliability and validity of that data, just by virtue of it being new to teachers. Was why there is that secondary ability to, you know, to, to take the map assessment. There's always a, a course for parents to, if they feel that the data has been misinterpreted. Or that the process has not been equitable, there, there always has been and always will be. You know, a means for parents to bring forward that, you know, that appeal on some level. And I'd like to think that in, you know, the time that I've been here, you know, I'm going to listen to and take all that information in objectively. And if I feel the. And if I feel the process has failed a child, then I will acknowledge that and we'll make that right. But I admittedly, Mr. Mendez could speak much more specifically to the criteria, to the numbers and, and that concern. There was a question about next year in terms of hybrid. Again, I mean, so, so let's, let's go on the assumption that the governor's, you know, presser proclamation that all kids, all day, every day, no, no virtual. So if that's the case, then I think we would, we would continue to have the virtual piece at our disposal. For God forbid, if we have to go down this road again, whether we have students who are on homebound, whether we have students that are medically fragile or, you know, other, other means for using that, even if it's just as a supplemental or a sidecar resource for that brick and mortar instruction. I, I do foresee there being some use for hybrid instruction. But it's hard to say exactly at this point in time what that would be, not knowing exactly what the directive is going to be. And, you know, I, I spoke a little about the Friday synchronous. The, so the middle school. So we will know, we will get the updated Cali score on Thursday. So typically the, the updated Cali, Cali score, Cali report comes in on Thursday. You know, you know, can we do the legwork in advance of it, to prepare to open for, for May 10th, the, the backend pieces? Yes. You know, my take on it, and, and this was, this was ultimately my call, is that, you know, to, to, to get the information on the 7th. And in basically one school day, prior to when we're actually launching, you know, turn that ship. To me, and, and, and again, you know, I, I play things a little bit more conservatively. You know, being here two years, it's a big system, it's a big organization, making changes, making pivots in these times in a district of this size. I want to give parents, I want to give students, I want to give staff, you know, ample opportunity to prepare for that, which is why I've recommended, in consultation with the administrative team and with the principals to begin that pivot on, 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 on May 17th. And finally, just relative to the HAP program. So, you know, I, 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 I'd like to think that I'm a superintendent that, you know, that is fairly hands-on when it comes to curricular matters. Having, you know, come from a curriculum background, it's something that interests me. It's something that I feel I'm able to provide, you know, constructive feedback. You should know that any proposal that comes up to me from the curriculum office, from the principals is looked at closely. I ask a lot of questions about those things before I move it forward to the board. And I can tell you that this modification and, 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 and all, and with all proper respects to Ms. Hamilton, and certainly very, very happy to hear that her son had such a positive experience in the program. But this was a, a recommendation that came to my office with the full support of not only the curriculum office, but the Edison School Administration. It was a modification that was done inclusively between those groups, inclusive of instructional teacher level input to that change. And of course, I have a lot of confidence in Mr. Fitzgerald and his administration. You know, as a longtime principal in that school, seeing things longitudinally, a principal that's led that school to school to watch distinction and a principal who's very, very hands-on and involved in instructional and curricular matters. Not all principals necessarily are, but Mr. Fitzgerald is. And I truly believe, when I look at these modifications, I truly believe that this is, this really is in the best interest of kids. And I'm going to give you a little information as to why I think this. And it's not just my thoughts, these are thoughts that are shared by the people who recommended the program to me. First is, you know, when we look at the current configuration of the program, the fact that the HAP program is, is kind of inextricably linked to, to simply this ELA honors section. What does that mean? Well, it means that only students that are in ELA honors can benefit from the HAP program. So if you happen to, you know, and, and Ms. Hamilton mentioned math honors, but if you happen to be strong in math, if you're, if you're social studies, science, STEM, you know, you're, you don't have access to HAP unless you're in ELA honors. You know, maybe you're, you know, you know, so maybe you're not in ELA honors, but you're gifted. Or you don't, you don't have an opportunity for HAP. I think the second piece is that, and it's not to say that you can't effectively, and perhaps we have been effectively addressing, you know, literacy, if you will, kind of intertwined with HAP. I think it's fair to say that you, that you're not going to get as targeted and robust and ELA experience, rigorous ELA experience, you know, in a class that's intertwined with HAP as opposed to a class that's specifically dedicated to ELA. What this does is it now enables students of all, you know, of all gifted Bens, if you will, access to gifted and talented. It, it also gives students choice. So what will happen is the students, students would take gifted and talented kind of aligns as offset with oral languages, which is exploratory in the sixth grade level, Spanish and Mandarin. So a student could opt and say, you know what, I, I actually just want to be gifted for, for marking periods. And they could do that. They could do two marking periods of gifted and two marking periods of the same language. They could do two marking periods of gifted and one marking period of Spanish and one marking period of Mandarin. Or, you know, a, any combination thereof. And so it sort of exposes kids in sixth grade to kind of that choice model that then becomes sort of characteristic of the middle school experience and then of course, the high school experience. And so when you talk about targeted rigor in ELA, greater access for students of all gifted Bens and that I, that, that premise of choice and the current instructor maintaining a, 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 a role and a place within that gifted program moving forward. I have to say, if, if I, if there is a downside to it, I'm just not seeing it. Other than to some extent, you know, a, 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 in a fit, in an affection, if you will, for the, for the current, the current mode of the program by virtue of a positive experience that a student or parent's child might've had. But I really do feel that this is a, is a positive enhancement to the program overall and makes the program stronger for a greater number of kids. And I think that's all I have, Mr. Rixgels.
Thank you, Dr. Casco. Mr. Feigenbaum, you directed a question to the board and I think you specifically called me out as an educator. So I, I'm going to answer first as an educator and address the fact that because I'm an educator, I have supported what we've done. I had the opportunity to actually be in a school during September and had a keen, keen awakening as to all of the moving parts that are required. These are unprecedented times. There's no guidebook, there was no in-basket exercise for any superintendent, for any board to figure out how to do this. And so I think that the board has been very pleased with the steps that we've taken and with the leadership of Dr. Casco. Now, could we have done more? Hindsight is 2020. Oh my goodness, let's look back at November. We can look back and say, oh, wow, we could have opened in November. But let me assure you that when we did decide to open, we had tons of emails. We, we had, we had folks telling us that we would have blood on our hands by opening the schools and allowing staff and students to come back during a pandemic. What we do as a board, what the superintendent does, what all superintendents and all board members have done during this time is to walk a fine line. It's, it's almost like a tightrope where you are trying to balance those parents who want to have their students come back full-time and those who are comfortable where we are at this point in time. I think we've done a really good job and, and I'm not the only one that feels that way. I think you know that Governor Murphy reached out to Dr. Casco and to the president of the West Orange Education Association and commended the West Orange Public Schools for doing a very fine job. And so I know everyone's not happy with the decisions that have been made. But we wanted to keep students and staff safe. That was our number one priority. And I think we've done a very good job at that, keeping everyone safe. And now that things are loosening up, we're taking steps to move in that direction. And as far as next year, as Dr. Casco said, we're assuming it's full steam ahead until someone tells us otherwise. And so I'd like to thank everyone for joining me.
Mr. Rixgels, I apologize. I, I just realized that Ms. Nestor had a question that I did not answer.
Okay.
So the question was, I'm just going back and reading the correspondence. So, so the grade K five, so we'll shift to four half-days per week with synchronous instruction in the afternoon. And that's kind of how we're operating now. Beginning May 7th, Friday instruction will be synchronous virtual days. And that would be, the building principals will be sharing schedules. So it's synchronous basically for the, you know, the, the morning hours, basically, you know, 8:45 to 12:30. And then there would be additional activities in the afternoon. But those schedules will be shared by building principals this week. But it is synchronous in the morning, basically aligned with the morning session, Monday through Thursday. On Friday would be synchronous.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Casco. And again, I'd like to thank the members of the public who joined us at this very, very special Friday night board meeting. And I wish that everyone has a wonderful weekend. We are beginning May 1st with the celebration of Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. So there's a lot, a lot of good stuff coming up. And so have a great weekend, everyone. And I'd like to entertain a motion now for the board to go into executive session. Thank you, Vice President Tony Cliff. Is there a second?
Yes, I can do it.
Thank you, Mr. Rothstein. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you. Good night. Thank you, Ms. Graffteza.
Thank you. And this is to inform everyone that when I end this meeting, this portion of the public meeting, it will end and no other business will happen in the public, as you will not be convening back to public after your executive session. Correct. Yes.
Correct. Yes, that is correct.
Great. Thank you. Have a great night, everyone.